Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order. And we have guests this evening to lead us in the pledge of allegiance from Troop 150 in West Salem. Brendan Robertson and Ian Hurtimp come on down and take us through the pledge of allegiance. And thank you very much for being here this evening. Okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, oops, forgot to call the roll. Now we'll see who's here.
We're just so excited.
I know.
Board member Kazer. Board member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board member Nanki.
I am here.
Board member McCoy.
Here.
Board member Osik.
Here.
Board member Hoy.
Here.
Board member Cook.
Here.
Board member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Counselor McCoy. Additions and deletions?
We have no additions or deletions.
Okay. Do you have anyone for public comment? No one has signed up for public comment. Did anyone want to address the Urban Renewal Agency? All righty. And the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Go through it.
Why don't you?
At the minutes of the February 12th Urban Renewal Agency meeting, the resolutions we have, to adopt a resolution to transfer 320,000 of appropriation authority from the Convention Center Fund contingencies to the Convention Center Fund materials and services. We then have a series, we have 4.2B, which adopts the resolution authorizing the Urban Renewal Agency to issue the issuance of a short-term bond in an amount not to exceed 13 million to pay for the cost of urban renewal projects in the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area. 4.2C is issuing short-term bonds not to exceed 6.5 million to pay for costs of urban renewal projects in the riverfront downtown urban renewal. 4.2D is the same, issuing short-term bonds in an amount of 1.5 million for urban renewal projects in the Mill Creek Industrial Park Urban Renewal Area. 4.2E is issuance of short-term bonds in an amount to exceed 1.5 million to pay for costs of urban renewal projects in the McGill Crisp Urban Renewal Area. Under action items, 4.3A is the use of $819,000 of North Gateway Urban Renewal Area funds to increase funding authority for a streetscape improvement project within the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area. 4.3B is approving the management agreement incentive fee calculation for the Salem Convention Center for the three-year period from July of 2017 through July of 2020, and that's just an extension of what's been in existence for quite some time. That is your consent calendar.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one brief question, if I may. It didn't rise to the level of pulling it. I just have a question.
Yeah.
It's for Mr. Duncan, and I tried to get ahold of him this afternoon, but he was out. I'm looking at 4.2A, Casey, which is the transferring money to the Salem Convention Center, which is, I'm all in favor of that, but I'm just curious about the facts and findings. It says, "The over expenditure amount was not material in nature." I'm wondering what the definition of material is, because as I look at that, 320,000 is getting close to 10% of 3.5 million.
I think one thing you have to consider is that for the expenditures that they're having, it's related to an increase in bookings, and so they're seeing a revenue on the upshot.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, that was not anticipated. And we ran into a situation last year where we did not provide them sufficient authority for the expenditures that took place over the fiscal year. So this year, we're trying to ensure that that doesn't take place and that they've got the authority needed to provide for the costs associated with the additional bookings and the success that they're having there. And I'll ask Kelly Jacobs if she has anything additional to add.
Thank you very much.
Will this appear, then, in the urban renewal budget? Not this particular item, but this kind of cost overrun issue? Will we see an increase in there, in the allocation, in the budgeting process, or how will that?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll ensure that the appropriation authority is there, and that's partly why contingencies are available for uses such as this.
Okay, so it'll show up under the contingency amount, and then we'll take it up as it arrives, okay? I wanted to thank the city manager, and I assume Mr. Fernandez, for the explanation on 4.3A. I thought that was helpful. If I understood correctly, that's where we were talking about the extension of the sewage line?
And also Director Rutherford.
Ah, there she is. Sorry. Do you want to explain just real quickly what's going on out there? I guess I was surprised to see in it that there is interest in development on the east side, I think, of the, is that what's happening?
That's correct. That's part of the story here. The other part is that we do have the streetscape improvement project that's going to add some crossings and some signal interconnects as a part of this streetscape project. And then, as we were developing the streetscape project, we discovered that there's a gap in sewer on Portland Road. At the same time that we're discovering this gap, we have interest in parcels along Portland Road that would make use of that sewer. So that sewer infill project was added to the streetscape project. Sewer infill and utility work is identified as an objective within the plan, and so it made sense to add it to this so that it could help facilitate the new development in that area.
So we're seeing pretty serious interest in that area up there? That's kind of those woods up in there?
That's right, along the creek there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Information reports. You want to inform us?
I defer to Counselor.
Do you want to wait and see what she's going to inform us on, or do you want to start her off?
I don't know. It's up to you, Director Rutherford, which way you want to go. We already had a conversation today, so she knows where my question is coming, so I presume I won't ask it, and you can answer it.
See if she answers it.
Yeah.
There we go. It's a test. There we go.
It's a race to the mic here.
I don't like to lose those.
I understand.
So we've continued to have open houses and obtained input into the downtown streetscape improvement process. One of the questions that does come up periodically, and which Counselor Anderson raised today, is who makes the decision, or who did make the decision, that we would not be including the travel lanes on Liberty and Commercial as a part of the streetscape process? So I would like to clarify that this is not a transportation system planning process. This is a streetscape process. I do know that Director Fernandez has some information to add to this about prior work leading up to the streetscape project. But the decision was made moving forward that to make any changes to those lane configurations would entail a transportation system planning update process. We also have the downtown congestion study that's just kicking off to look at improving the traffic flow through downtown rather than slowing down the traffic flow through downtown, and, you know, how we can relieve that congestion. So as a part of the streetscape design process, to be able to move forward with some of these improvements, the decision was made to not look at reducing these travel lanes as a part of this project, but to look at what we can do in the sidewalks and maybe in parking spaces so that we can move forward with improvements in a timely fashion rather than kind of slowing down everything until the transportation system planning work could occur. But I'll turn it over to you to talk about prior work.
Yeah, just very briefly, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Two years ago, we completed the downtown circulation study that looked at all of the streets in downtown. At that time, the decision, and the council adopted that study, and at the time, we reduced the lanes on Commercial Street. Went from four to three and did the shared bike lanes on both sides. That was the plan that gave us the church and high bike lanes, where we reduced lanes there. That was the study that gave us the signal, recommended the signal at Union and Commercial. So that work was done, and there was extensive work done to look at that, and one of the things that we looked at was Liberty Street. And the analysis showed that we could not afford to reduce lanes on Liberty Street. We could afford it on Commercial Street. We could afford it on High and Church. By afford, I mean traffic congestion-wise, but we simply didn't have the capacity. The throughput was just too big on Liberty Street to be able to recommend any reductions there, but it was, we looked at it. There's more work coming from that study. There's a number of double left turns that are going to be eliminated, brought down to single left turns, which will make it safer for pedestrians. So we're still implementing recommendations from that study. The two-waying of State is a recommendation from that study. So there's still a lot of work to be done there, but I think what happened here is that work was already done. That was already adopted by council. Work is being accomplished there. So streetscape is really about what's happening on the sidewalk, not the street system.
What I hear you saying, I think, just to make sure I understand it, is you're not foreclosing future discussion of changes on commercial liberty or any of the others. It just is going to require a more comprehensive process that includes additional transportation studies if it's ever going to go that direction.
Well, a comprehensive study was done.
Okay.
And was reviewed by, was put out to the citizens, was approved by the council. If council wants to look at it again, then we can look, I mean, we can always look at it again, but at this point, that was just finished.
Yeah.
Two years ago. I mean, we're still doing improvements based on those recommendations.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I am interested, Director Rutherford, in what you just said about commercial and liberty, because when you look at the actual document here, it just says, "Travel lanes narrowing downtown streets," which, to me, implied everything, all streets downtown, but what you're saying, it's commercial and liberty, which are the state highways, and also, I would guess Marion and Center, which go to the bridges. Those are the ones that we really have the problems with, not as much with the other east-west and north-south streets?
I would add trade and ferry in front to the list.
We're getting pretty much all of them now, aren't we?
However, we are leading into the streetscape project, and it's kind of on hold right now until we complete the design elements. It's to two-way Court Street and State Street. So those are still on the topic for discussion, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other, anything else you want to highlight? Okay. Okay, very good. That appears to have completed the agenda. We are adjourned. Okay? Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for March 12th to order. If you'll please call the roll.
Counselor Kazer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay, I have a proclamation. I wanted to invite up Don Gunther from Public Works. There he is. Don has been, Don's been part of the city's tree crew for almost 18 years, and the lead tree trimmer. You all want to know who trims the trees. We now know who Don is. And Don is on the board of the Oregon Community Trees Advisory Panel for Oregon Department of Forestry's Urban Forestry Assistant Program. So we asked him to receive the proclamation on cherry trees. And let me just read that. "Whereas the cherry tree is an essential part of the city of Salem's history, culture, environment, and economy; and whereas Salem's first cherry festival was held in 1903 with a three-day celebration; and whereas in 1907, the Pacific Coast Association of Nurserymen adopted a resolution declaring Salem to have the greatest and finest display of cherries known in history."
Whoa.
And they're out now. "And whereas in 1913, the Salem Charians organization was established to host an annual blossom day; and whereas in 1986, the city of Salem and Kalagoa City, Japan, entered into a sister-city relationship to strengthen the bonds between our cities; and whereas in 1992, more than 150 Akabono flowering cherry trees were planted on the Capitol Mall; and whereas in 2017, Oregon's Legislative Assembly adopted Senate Bill 146, designating the third Saturday in March as Cherry Blossom Day; and whereas residents and visitors enjoy strolling under the cherry trees in the Capitol Mall, admiring the blossoms and observing the history recorded on the stone pavers. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, hereby proclaim March 17th, it's this Saturday, 2018, to be Cherry Blossom Day in Salem, and encourage all residents and visitors to join in its observance dated this 12th day of March 2018." Thank you very much, and I really do want to be sure people are aware that there will be a celebration. Don will tell you about it.
Maybe not. Before he proves them.
Actually, I don't know anything about the celebration. I apologize. I would like to say, though, that showcasing the cherry tree is, I think, a great way to recognize trees for the important role that they do play in the life of this community. So on behalf of Parks Operations and the Tree Section, I do gladly accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, you want to give me a motion on additions and deletions there?
I move approval of the additions to the agenda. We have one addition, and that is an added information report, 18-125. It's a planning and administrative decision.
Okay. In discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And now for council and city manager comments. Counselor McCoy.
I served on the police facility, sort of, council microphone.
My microphone. I'd like to say it again. I've been requested by Deputy Chief Belshaw to remind folks of a couple items that are coming up on the police facility here soon. On March 16th, there's a demolition day, and you can watch down on the corner of Division, northeast corner of Division, commercial, starting at 10:00 a.m. And on March 21st, at 6:00 p.m., there's a town hall meeting on police facility at Broadway Commons, and they're looking for feedback on the design concepts.
Great. Now, that demolition day, is that the one where the chief shows up with a cat and starts? Is that correct?
Chief is nodding yes.
Chief, you want to comment on your hat?
With a big smile on his face, yeah.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. Well, I'm told I'm going to be having bulldozer lessons on Thursday for Friday's event, so I'm not really sure what's going to happen, but it should be entertaining. We're really excited, as you may guess. As you go by, you can actually see some activity occurring on the site, so a lot of excitement, and we're looking forward to taking the buildings down and putting up a new one.
Great. Are there any surprises yet on what you're finding as you take it down?
Well, I think the folks that were, the Public Works or the engineers, had a pretty good idea of what was going to be in there originally, and that's come to fruition.
Great.
But I think maybe once we get in the ground, we might find more, so we'll hope we don't, but I think things are going along very well.
Great. Well, thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you in the driver's seat.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sticking with the theme of trees, on March 2nd, I was really pleased to be able to attend a lecture at Laux Auditorium by Dr. Kathy Wolf on the connection between trees and health. And then, so it was a very informative talk about the connection between people's health and having viable trees within a city. And along those lines, I want to remind everybody that on April 7th, from 9:00 to 1:00, the Friends of Trees will be planting out in Ward 6 at Weathers Park. I encourage you all to show up. It's a great event. If you've never been to the Friends of Trees event, it's a lot of fun. It's educational. You learn the ins and outs of planting a tree, and you get to give back a little to the city in the way of planting something that will be there for a long time, so I would encourage you all to be there. I will be there. It'll be my, I think, fifth Friends of Trees event. It's a lot of fun. And also, I was pleased to welcome you, Mr. Mayor, and many members of the staff out towards Ward 6 on March 8th for the latest of the Bridging the Gap events, town hall. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty, very good. We already jumped the gun and did the proclamation, so we will go to public comment from Mr. Evan White.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and counselors. Thank you for your service. My name is Evan White, and I live in Ward 7, not far from Shirley School and Sprague High. I'm land use chair of the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to speak briefly in favor of the motion made by Counselor Cook, which would greatly improve bicycle and pedestrian connectivity between our neighborhood and our friends in the Southwest Association of Neighbors. The so-called Cemetery Trail is adjacent to Velcress Cemetery. It does not go through the cemetery. It goes through the woods next to the cemetery and provides a way for us to walk or bike to Candelaria and Laurel Springs and prepare to get very muddy at this time of year. I go to a number of downtown meetings most every week, and one of my greatest fears is I'll be driving home at night along South Liberty, where there are no bike paths, and it'll be dark and rainy, and it will be my bad luck to suddenly encounter a bicyclist wearing dark clothing with no red taillight and probably no bike helmet either. We must find safer ways to get around town for those who cannot afford to own a car. Generations and generations of future Salem residents will thank you for your foresight in voting in favor of Counselor Cook's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. White. Is there anyone else that wanted to address the council tonight? All righty, thank you. Consent calendar.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar with a 1.0 poll. Item 3.2A by Counselor Kazer.
Second. Okay, you want to run through what we're?
Sure. Got the minutes of the February 26th City Council meeting. Under action items, 3.3A, we're authorizing the city manager to execute an attached purchase and sale agreement to acquire real property located at 4493 Hayesville Drive Northeast. And this is to purchase a site to build a new pump station for one that's failed. 3.3B is a subordination of a home investment partnership, single-family rehabilitate deferred payment loan for a property located at 1350 Peace Street Southeast. This basically means we're going to, it's over $20,000. Under $20,000, the city manager can take care of this. Over $20,000, council has to approve, basically taking a second, being number two in line if something happens on this loan. It was a $20,000 loan to help them improve the property. What this will do, the city is at no risk, is if, once the home is sold, we'll recover our money, and the loan will be repaid. That is it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. All righty. What have we got here? Counselor Cook, you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would move that council direct staff to present the council with a resolution initiating amendments to the Salem Transportation Systems Plan and Comprehensive Park Systems Master Plan to add additional trail connection between Dogwood Street Southeast and Croix-en-Cenec Trail, and upon adoption of the master plan amendments, direct staff to acquire the additional sections through land use conditions or direct negotiations.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor?
I fully support this amendment, and I appreciate the support of council with this at all, as well. Ward 7 is a wonderful, beautiful ward, but as far as access and transportation for pedestrians and bicyclists, it's extremely difficult because of the hills, because of the way development has happened within the ward. So this trail system is an integral part. I would say that if the arterials and the streets are like our circulation system, Ward 7 could do with some better cardiac health and prevention, and this is part of keeping that circulation flowing and keeping the people in Ward 7 with a high quality of life and good livability. So I'd appreciate your vote on this.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, 5.2B. Let's see. "I move that staff review Salem Revised Code, Section 94.195, possession of alcoholic beverages in parks, and return to council with a recommendation regarding whether to allow beverages with over 14% alcohol in Salem's parks during permitted events." Second. Second by Hoy?
Lewis.
Oh, by Lewis. I'm sorry. Yeah. Just want to see if the cop could go for it. As you know from the written discussion, this is an opportunity for us to take a look at extending the availability of spirits during events where licensed and permitted uses are underway. It goes with a batch of other activities that go on in the parks, and this is, will give us a chance to have a public hearing on this issue and have a discussion of it. We currently allow wine and beer sales. This would add spirits to that list. Yes?
I have some concerns that I would want to make sure that staff was included in that, if that would be all right, Mr. Mayor, to have some discussion, or would that be?
Oh, yeah, whatever you'd like to do. I think the main thing is whether, if you could discuss whether to have staff return to us rather than debate the underlying issue, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. I would want to make sure that the staff report includes law enforcement data around any extra shifts or staffing that are required around current permitted events.
Yeah.
Also, data as far as medical, so not just police, but fire with calls medically to some of these events where alcohol is already permitted. I would also like to see that impact on the budget as far as staffing is concerned, and additional data from within our community, because this is a systemic change that could impact the community as a whole. Just information in general about minors in possession or about citations with noncompliance for licensed OLCC vendors or events, just that kind of stuff, wanting to make sure we have a full picture. And I would also request that, I understand we have a time constraint on this, wanting to move forward, but that we make sure to give community partners enough time to be able to respond as we're concurrently having the discussion about sobering facilities in the area.
Yeah. I think that makes sense. Yes, Counselor Kazer?
Thank you. Just a brief comment. I've already, you know, this hit the paper today. There's an article. We've received multiple emails about it. As staff study this, I think it would be important to have some component of public education about what it is we're actually studying.
Doing.
Because there's confusion already among the public about, we're just going to have alcohol for sale all the time in all the parks, and it's just, so there's already misinformation out there about what it is.
Yeah, and there will continue to be misinformation, I'm sure, but let's sort of clarify briefly what it is we're talking about. We're talking about events that already occur, sort of the bite and brew and... We're talking about events that already occur, sort of the Biden brew, and I think the skating rink served beer and wine and others, and this would add?
No.
Could hurt your head.
Mr. Mayor? Never mind.
Did you want to?
Well?
Did you, did you overdo it at the skating rink? Now, what are you up to?
I think that if we're?
If this is a testimonial, we can?
I think if we're having a discussion about social availability and norming within our community, that we make sure that we're being data-driven. As Counselor Kazer said, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and?
Yeah.
Within our own cultural norms, there are some pervasive myths as well, so I would welcome, I mean, I understand it's not staff's responsibility to reach out to the hospital to look at alcohol-related injuries and how they may ever flow, given the season. We're right around St. Patrick's Day, where I know staffing can ramp up for certain events.
Yeah, as the only injured party during the opening of the rink. I don't drink, so that was just on me. I ended up on my head, I don't, just so that doesn't get counted, I guess. This is, I think it's mainly an opportunity, and I agree with you, I don't disagree with you at all, this is not to open our parks to being allowed to bring beer, or wine, or spirits to our parks. That is not allowed under, and this, that will not be changed. This is the events where we have OLCC licensed vendors in a controlled environment being able to provide one additional service, so, but I think we need to explore all of that. I think you make a very good point.
Thank you.
I have absolutely no disagreement. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay? And we're to information reports. The poll, the poll. Counselor Kazer, you are going to treat us to this one.
I am. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Discussion?
I really just wanted to pull this, just to highlight all the work that staff has done on the State Street corridor study. I've been following this since before I was on the council. It's been going on for, I think, over two years. It's one of the best public outreach efforts, I think, I've seen the city conduct. There have been dozens of people that have attended the public meetings. There's been, there's a website, there's been surveys, there's been canvassing outreach to the businesses. It's, it's really a model for how this process should work when we're undertaking large planning issues, and I just really wanted to say kudos to Eunice, and to Lisa, and Norm, and everybody kind of on the staff with this. So I'm really excited this is going forward, and I completely support it, and yeah, just wanted to highlight that.
Great, thank you very much. This, this was an effort I started as the, when I was on the city council, along with Counselor Anderson, to get this going, and I think we're both really proud of the work that was done by Lisa and Eunice and the whole planning staff. You really, I think, highlighted what a model this was of how this can be done. Counselor Anderson?
I agree with what both the mayor and Counselor Kazer said, and I do have much congratulations to, I'm going to say, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy and Eunice Kim, so we can get their last names here, who did a terrific job here. And I look forward to further discussion of this, even though we have had discussion, it's mostly been neighbors on either side and people who are immediately directly affected, but I'd like to also hope we can hear from the greater public. And along those lines, I'm looking at Section 2 of the resolution, which talks about a public hearing before the Planning Commission and recommendations, and I would also like to see a public hearing before this body after the Planning Commission, excuse me. And I don't know then, Mr. City Attorney, if I need to make an amendment to that resolution, or can I just say we want to have one, or what's going to happen?
Staff can, can bring that back as a public hearing, or when it comes to you for a decision, you can elect to?
Okay, well, so I won't make anything right now, but I will, I will tell you that I will ask for a public hearing, and I hope staff does too, so we can, council can hear it as a whole, as well as just the Planning Commission.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I certainly hope we get to hear this, because I think it's that important. This is, Mr. Fernandez mentioned the two-waying of State Street, and I viewed this as part of that effort, too, to complete that project. I've spent 10 years on the council and gotten two blocks worth of two-waying done, so Mr. Fernandez has assured me someday, someday, we'll be able to drive like we used to, drive free here in Salem, both directions.
Mayor, if I may, we can not, we can not two-way across the railroad tracks, or we'll lose the quiet zone, so?
We'll be so close.
So, everything can be two-way except, except that block.
And I wanted that quiet zone for 10 years, so it's like I got in my own way, didn't I, I guess? Okay, well, very good. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Information reports? Anything? Okay, we have no first readings, we have a second. Oops, I'm sorry.
I just have a, I don't know if it's a comment or a question on the planning decision. It doesn't have an item, but I think that's coming under information reports, that is the addition to the agenda tonight?
Yes.
I'm just, a couple of questions. I guess my first one is, I'm just sort of curious as to why this decision was in Mount, March 12th, which is today, and it's coming to the council three hours later. So I don't have any time to review this, and I know anybody else doesn't, and so how can I make any decision if I might want to call it up or might want to look at it? So is there some sort of time-based issue here that a decision had to be made by today, and as opposed to putting this on the agenda for two weeks from now? That's my first question.
Counselor Anderson Ogilvy, you want to fill us in?
Hi, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, you're planning administrator. We're just worried about the 120 days. We took a lot of time to work on the conditions, and now that we have them right, we think with this decision, we wanted to get it on the agenda and move it forward so that way if it's called up or it's appealed, you would actually have time to have a public hearing before the 120 days.
Okay, but what we have been given from when we got this, I got this when I showed up here, so?
Would you like to call it up, counsel?
Well, I don't know that I would, but it's, it's less than an hour we've had to look at this, so is there, what happens if we, if we just postpone this for two weeks? Is that going to run into the 120-day issue?
I think she's saying it could, is?
Yeah.
What you're saying?
If I can address that, there's two different issues. One's 120 days is, runs out in May 17th, so there's a potential that we wouldn't have time to have a full hearing. The other issue is the council rule says you've got to the first regular meeting to call it up, so this is your opportunity.
I know, I know that second rule. Okay, then, if I can ask you a couple other questions that might help me make my decision. I hesitate to use the words perused and scanned again like I used last meeting, but how is this connected to the Lone Oak Bridge situation, and how is it connected to the Bernt property that we moved toward establishing a special reimbursement district, and now we postponed, you know, we're, we're looking at that again? So how does this connect?
So this property is just south of the Bernt property. It's not currently inside the city limits, so this is their first step before they come forward for annexation. It has a condition that they have to build Reese, build Lone Oak down to Reese Hill and pay into the reimbursement district unless the district doesn't exist.
And are these folks in at the 100% level as opposed to the 50% or the 25%?
Correct.
Because they're on Lone Oak Road?
Lone Oak will go through their property, yes.
I'm not going to call it up, but because of what you just said, in terms of it's related to the Lone Oak Reimbursement District, and those are decisions we're going to have to face anyway, whether or not this particular piece is in it now or later, because whatever we do is going to affect this.
Okay, very good. Yes?
Just a clarifying question, I guess, and if I can ask it, let me know, but if we, at our next meeting, were hearing about Lone Oak again, and that decision is overturned, how does that affect these land use decisions that are going forward now?
The conditions for, for this particular decision and the Bernt's modification, which was on your agenda last meeting, both tried to anticipate that alternative, if the district were to go away, the requirement to build the improvement is still there, and the condition provides that they can, you know, pay a fee in lieu towards, towards constructing a portion of the improvements, as well as building the southern extension of Lone Oak.
Okay. Is everybody okay? All righty, all those in favor of not doing nothing will go on ahead. Very good choice, okay. Go to the second reading, then.
Ordinance bill number 2-18, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 5500 Block of Skyline Road South, annexed to the city of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, this is our last chance for public comment. Does anyone want to address the council? Okay, then we are adjourned.